It doesn't tell you it's doing it anymore for you, but it does say up there the meeting is being reported, so you're okay. And then it should be flashing.
Okay, perfect. All right, um, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, May thirteenth. Like to call the meeting to order and have our finance director perform a roll call, please.
Christian, quick.
Present.
Christian Noel.
Here.
And Christian Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Um, we do not have an invocation scheduled for today, but if you please stand um and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first is public comment. Do you have anyone here for public comment? Yeah, come on up. How are you?
Good.
Go ahead and just introduce yourself to the commissioners and then uh, thank you for coming.
Yes, uh, my name's Daniel Slitzbaum, um, concerned citizen of Atchison County, uh, especially up there where the proposed quarry could possibly come into the county. My big concern are the roads, you know, I know you just, what, two years ago, you did Morton Road, you know, all the rock that will come out of this quarry will have to go down the county roads. And the roads, you know, I just want to thank you for how well you did the road up there, Morton Road, you know, I know what a little less than two million dollars it cost. So I'm very concerned, you know, what this quarry is proposing to do, come up there and mine, especially gravel, and use the county roads and not paying anything back to the county. So what I'm proposing here, you know, uh, especially this quarry that possibly could come in, but also the other quarries in county, let me explain to you a little bit, you know, there's a lot of gravel that comes out of these quarries that don't stay in the county. You know, Donovan County, Jefferson County, get a lot of quarry, especially up on River Road, but they use our county roads and that you don't receive anything back for the, for wearing the roads out, you know, who knows? You know, how many tons come out of the, the River Road quarry? It's a lot of rock. And this is year round. I like to propose a, a rock tax, uh, especially on the quarries that are in the county, plus the one that's coming, possibly could come into the county. Uh, a rock tax for every ton of gravel and lime that comes out of these quarries. And I know, you know, all the townships are tax exempt, but they're still using your county roads to get to their township, correct? I'd like to see where the uh, the townships would also have to pay a new rock tax for using your county roads, our county roads that we all pay to keep them up. And, you know, I, I don't want to say they uh, use them more than anybody else, but they are using them and the more you use a road, they're going to wear out, especially heavy loads. You know, most of these loads that come out of the quarry are from between eighty and ninety thousand pounds. You know, a lot of them are probably overweight. Um, you know, same way, that's my big concern coming out this, this new quarry that could possibly come in. Um, talking with Clint. I'm surprised he's not here this morning. Um, I know you're, I've heard some other issues, you know, that you're, you're trying to fight this quarry too, the keeping them out, you know? Uh, I heard a little bit about, you know, there's different levels of zoning. You know, I think it's only a matter of time before, you know, I know Brown County is fighting a solar or a wind turbine co- um, company right now coming into Brown County. I think it's only a matter of time before, you know, wind turbine companies or solar companies will want to come in here too. It's, it's only a matter of time. And um, you know, I'm against zoning, you know, the big word of zoning, but from what I've heard, there's uh, steps down from initial zoning the whole county. Where, you know, the property owners have to buy permits to do anything, you know, build a, building, we gotta go in and get a, you know, permit to do that. So um, I don't, are you going to talk about the, the, the levels of zoning in this meeting, are you today?
It's on the agenda. Um, sorry, I have to look at two, roughly two o'clock.
Okay, that's afternoon now.
Yep.
Okay, so uh, but my big concern, like I said initially, you know, concerned with the roads in the county, because every ton of gravel that come, you know, out of this new quarry and the other quarries in the county, they're wearing out our county roads. And they're not giving anything, especially the rock that goes out of the county. And there's a lot of that that goes out of the county. You know, and they're just wearing out our county roads.
I very much appreciate your input. Um, we've actually had um, a gentleman that attends our budget hearings the past two years that have had the same concern and brought up to you. And I've asked several questions and kind of struck out. Um, I think it has to be a conversation with the business owners because many of them are already established and, and understanding, you know, have them understand and come to an agreement. I met a gentleman from uh, this year at Kansas County Commission Association and got his business card. I, he is from a county that has a quarry and kind of has some of those agreements in place, um, in which he was like, call me anytime. I can send you templates of the agreements, you know, so I really think it's a conversation that we as the commission with the business owners need to sit down and have because I don't think I haven't, I haven't learned where we can just impose a tax um, on them.
There's a specific statute that prohibits the county from adopting an excise tax, and this would be an, an excise tax. So it makes perfect sense to do it and it's therefore not allowed.
That's too bad it's not allowed, even, you know, I'm, well, I hate to say if you brought up for a vote, you know, it wouldn't pass. I'm sure it wouldn't, you know, be so many of those, especially the you know, farm owners and stuff, you know, would be against it, especially using lime out of the quarry. So you're saying there's something in the, in the bylaws of the county that?
No, there's something in state statutes.
Oh, state statute.
It's K S A twelve dash one ninety-four.
That we, you just cannot impose another tax on?
Cannot, the county could not impose an excise tax. An excise tax is generally a tax that comes upon the manufacturer or sale of a product. There are exceptions to that. The countywide retailer's sales tax is an exception to that, but it applies to sale of all goods, not due to sale of a specific.
Mm-hmm.
So it's been tried and it's been uh, turned down by the hands of Supreme Court and by the legislature, so, yeah.
You know, I'm just thinking this quarry that's not even in the county yet. What do we have at our means that we could uh, prompt this corporation coming into the county to um, have them just second think? In other words, what can we do to just put a little, you know, you know, I haven't heard from you, any of you guys, are you for the quarry or not, you know? But put a little bit of pressure on the quarry to um, you know, they haven't even done anything yet, you know, no equipment or anything's been moved in.
Well, you, you touched on it. And with the, you know, the nasty Z word, uh, but that's uh, that's, that's an option and we discussed it and it's, you know, you, you mentioned Brown County. That's exactly what they did. They just wanted to address one issue, but have the ability down the road if something similar came up. And that's what my thought is on this, is that it would be very specific. We would, you know, word it so that it didn't seem threatening to those who don't like, you know, the thought of zoning. It would be targeted and it would allow us the ability to, you know, address some of these issues uh, when solar. And, and let's face it, we need quarries in the world. We've got to have this.
We do, but they need to pay, you know, they're making money for every load that's going out, you know, and you know, what I don't like is, you know, they're using the county roads and just wear and tear will, you know, will, it will bring them up to fix the roads quicker than they shouldn't be.
I take it you live right in?
In that vicinity, yes.
Vicinity, so is there, is it, is it just the roads or is there any other concerns about having a quarry right in your vicinity? I mean?
Well, I'm, where I live, I'd be, you know, who knows, and there's three, four, three to five quarters of land there, you know, five to, you know, five or six hundred acres of ground and, you know, where I live would be, if they put it right next to where I live, I, I could be a half a mile from the quarry. You know, and somebody made the comment, you know, that, well, Clint told me that they're maybe looking at down the road and bringing a uh, uh, asphalt plant in, you know, and, you know, even though asphalt plants create smells. And, you know, that's, you know, who knows if that's possible or not, you know?
It's kind of a dangerous way, web we weave a little bit because I've had the same uh, proposals talked about to why not tax semis hauling grain across our bridges and, and now that these trucks have gotten so big, which combines have gotten to where you can't go down legally anywhere.
Right.
So it's like one, you know, so if you start thinking, well, we're just gonna target gravel or, or lime, and then it's like, well, it'll take a lot smaller step to just go, well, anything over so many pounds, any truck that's over so many pounds, which would get all the farmers and uh, so I think that's the, the hesitancy, at least on my part about uh, hopping onto a zoning, even if it's marginalized or and once you open the door, then it becomes, it's the next stepping stone. And that's what our discussion last week was mainly about. It's, and not only, I mean, to fortify that argument in my personal case here, I mean, on my argument is that we'd have to identify all of these zoning problems before we only just authorize just the targeted one, but we have to go through the process, identify all of these possible zoning things in a plan and then say, well, we're not going to do them, we're only going to do this. Well, you start opening that door, so uh, and I haven't uh, gotten any feedback really saying, oh, we're willing to go through the zoning process. Uh, that's still is uh, very unpopular, that Z word.
Right.
And, and you know, it's not just me, I'm, I'm going by feedback that I've gotten through the years from being a commissioner. I think you've gotten a lot of the same.
Yes, sir. Um, and to where I stand on the quarry, it's with my constituents and everybody has been in a negative outlook of the health and safety concerns, the road concerns, everyone shares the same sentiments. Um, I haven't had one person come to me and say, oh, this is a great thing. So um, that's where, you know, we're just trying to look out for what we can do to assist. I think to your point and, and to Mr. Campbell's point, this is just one example of what's to come. Um, so I definitely think educating people and having the conversations and getting all of us in the county up to speed with, you know, what it looks like, what the process looks like. And then let them decide if you want to move forward or not. Educating, there's no harm in educating.
Right.
There's a harm in implementing, right? So, so the education part, I think is, is very vital to knowing what we can and can't do as a county to protect our citizens, so.
Uh, you know, with the issue with Brown County, have any of you reached out to the commissioners of Brown County, what, you know, I don't know how far along the corporations, you know, the wind turbine corporations proposing coming up there? What are they thinking? Uh, I'm sure that they don't want it, obviously, you know?
So I left Mr. Heinen a message and I haven't heard back. He was part of the Brown County Blade Watch. Um, and I went to one of their meetings at the Gig Stads um, uh, two years ago, they held a meeting kind of explaining this is coming. They were being proactive. They knew it was coming. Um, and just kind of educating people at that time, but I haven't heard back from him on like what the, what steps they're taking and how they got to those steps, right? Because it would be interesting.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be important, you know, because I think, and like I said, it's only a matter of time before you're approaching in with the, either larger corporations in the quarry, you know?
Yes, sir.
That want to come in and I mean, they're, they're coming in to make money. We have to understand that. They come here to make money and they need to, you know, if they're going to use um, you know, the things the county, especially the roads the county has to offer, they need to pay back the county for using that. If they're going to make the money, that guy gets quarries coming in, who knows how many hundreds of thousands or millions of tons of gravel in, you know, a long number of years that they're going to take out of there. And, you know, my concern is, you know, they're, they're going to use, use us, use the county and, and pay nothing back to the county.
I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, I have to move on with the timeline, but we will have, we do have it on here. And I wanted to invite you, if you can come back, um, we can spend more time on it. I just, we have presenters here and I'm trying to be aligned.
You said two o'clock today, you can talk a little bit about the zoning issue, the problems. Yeah, I might come back.
Yeah, that would be great.
I would like to make one point before we take off, is that, so one of the first steps to zoning or anything similar to that is putting together a planning commission. So that involves citizens throughout the county. So to, to, to the point that, you know, we may be kind of somewhat disconnected, you two not so much, but as a commission may be disconnected from the feelings out. That planning commission would involve people from all throughout the county. So we would have uh, input from those folks, just to, so just so you know.
You know, it's a big process. I know zoning and it should be, I mean, it's well thought out process, you know, and it, and it just doesn't happen in a matter of weeks, you know?
Right.
It takes time, right? Yes.
But thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yes.
Um, I'd love for a motion to approve this week's agenda as presented unless you guys have something you wanted altered. Okay? Moved a second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, pass it through to zero. The consent agenda um, involve, includes the commission meeting minutes from last week, um, as well as our finance director will give a review.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, we don't have any payroll this week. Uh, the credit card total that we're paying out for uh, Wednesday's account's payable run is two thousand, two twelve and fourteen cents. Um, that consists of several departments. Um, it's little things, but like six dollars and nineteen cents for the appraiser's office for turnpike fee. Three sixty-one ninety-two for the attorney's office on computer, excuse me, computer monitor stands. One thousand, one ninety-five forty-one to the clerk's office for training, conference and travel expenses. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars even of county general for the chamber membership dues. Three hundred dollars even for the I T department for professional membership dues. Ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents for the wellness committee, which is the fresh fruit Friday expenses. And thirty dollars for solid waste on a background check for a employee hire. Um, the total for tomorrow's AP run Wednesday, May fourteenth is three hundred and forty-five thousand, two fifty-eight seventy-five. Um, the reason it's so high is for Ottawa road expenses. There's culverts that was purchased from the road and bridge department, which is just about over two hundred thousand. Um, so that's why it's a little higher this week. That's all I have.
Uh, one quick question on, on the um, summary of cash. So the sales tax is like four hundred and fifty thousand still? Are we looking to catch that up?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Hopefully when things get processed, um, it should be closer back to zero. I know we've been saying that, but this some transactions aren't processed yet, so.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So um, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move, second.
Moved a second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes through the zero. Here is a copy of our minutes deciding. And that was in our folder. All right, next commissioner comment, sorry, I'm just signing. Mr. Campbell, you have comments? How did it go?
Good, good. Uh, the Moreham Academy competed in the nationals. Uh, they did well. You know, didn't place top ten, but they, uh, they showed well, did well. I, I, my wife and I were able to attend that. Um, impressive. If you ever, you know, have a need to, to travel and watch or interested in mock trial, uh, I, I suggest go watch it and, and you can watch it, the regionals here in Topeka, the state competitions at Topeka, so you don't have to go out of, out of state to watch nationals, but it's impressive to watch these kids. And, and they, they couldn't do it without the coaches. They have three very dedicated uh, coaches, so, yeah.
That's awesome.
Wonderful experience, so.
Thanks. Mr. Noel?
I don't have anything this week.
Okay, um, uh, last week I attended the Benedictum Breakfast on Friday and then was invited to the um, A A E D C meeting this morning. I attended that. I want to remind everyone um, that this Thursday at seven P M. in this room, the commission room, is our Atchison County Lake Public Hearing to visit more about uh, the intentions of possibly selling the lake. So I know that um, it was pointed out to me um, that there were some social media being floated around with six P M. And that is not correct. I want to make sure everybody knows, um, it's always been said seven P M. right here and um, majority of people attending, I asked them to share as well, so seven P M. this Thursday, May fifteenth, um, to talk about the Atchison County Lake. All right, uh, next we have new business. We have uh, Mr. Kaplinger here with the Atchison County Historical Society with his twenty twenty-six budget request. Thank you. Welcome, come on up.
I have it printed for you too, for the.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
I guess you probably have a copy, huh?
How's it going this morning?
I'm getting by.
Good.
Been busy? The um, report that I've sent to you, I guess you're just now seeing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. Well, it's basically, it's the, it's a report that's similar to what we've presented in times past. Uh, draw your attention to the second page, uh, where it shows the, um, my contemplated budget for the twenty twenty-six year. Those uh, items that are um, highlighted in the expense and income, those are, I always try to match what it is that I, you know, what I'm requesting from the county. Match that income item to those expenses. And at the bottom, I do kind of a recapitulation where I take the tax revenue, the anticipated dues and entry fee fees that we receive and try to show how it all balances out. Um, it would show that if we were to receive ten thousand dollars in the coming year, that it would, those things would be offset. So we would have an approximately a cash flow of about eleven hundred and eighty dollars to deposit if we were to receive funding from the county. The um, I think that basically my presentation is, is, is along the lines of philosophically, what is an appropriate expense for the county? You know, that the ten thousand dollars uh, that we didn't get this in the current year. I understand you guys were, felt like you were being pinched pretty hard last year, but this is a service that um, is provided to the residents of this county and they've come to expect this. In fact, this was something that um, it was with the cooperation of the county that this whole thing got started in nineteen sixty-seven. And since that time, we've received uh, financial support from the county, except for this current year that we're in. The um, in fact, it um, it was one of the points that Bill Putoff was very proud of when he was on the county commission, uh, the support that we received from the county. This was one of those things that, in fact, you guys even helped us build a building that we use presently for our storage facility. And the city provides us with the museum space for which we're very grateful. That's um, I imagine that the cost to the city of Atchison probably exceeds what I'm asking, you know, when you figure that we're rent, living rent free and our utilities are being paid for and our internet is being paid for and all of that, that uh, that's a considerable donation that comes to us from the city of Atchison. We received a lot of um, inquiries and calls and uh, requests for assistance from not only people from outside the county doing research, but a lot of people inside the county as well. This year, we've uh, you know, trying to balance the books without the county contribution. It, we're able to do it, but we're kind of eating into our reserve a little bit and um, we're, we have increased our membership, which has helped us a lot with uh, revenue. We're doing a better job at the gate than we used to do because, you know, I reported to you last year, we changed from a donation to a required admission fee. So we're doing better. This year, we probably won't do quite as good as last year because the Kansas Sunflower uh, summer program has been diminished by the state of Kansas, and so we probably won't see as much income from that program as last year. Last year was a real, it, it basically it saved our rear.
I didn't hear the results. I signed the petition, but I didn't hear that they.
Well, the, the window uh, that the program can be used is about maybe one third of the time period as last year. Would, we would still receive the same amount of money for an entry. But it's for a much shorter period of time, basically about a, a month. And um, so I'm anticipating that that will, it might be more of a drop than what we've seen. We're hoping that other things, it's like the Amelia Earhart Hanger uh, museum has really helped us a lot because it does bring in lots of people. I mean, they have a tremendous uh, crowd comes through there and they do a really good job of trying to encourage people to come to the other museums in, in the city. So we're a beneficiary of that extra traffic that comes to town. So it's a, it's, it's a big deal, but it's a struggle um, for us and we, we rely so much on donations and grants and things that it's really hard to make a plan. That's one of the things in my narrative that I make a point about is, you know, if you guys were receiving tax money on a voluntary basis, it would be a little difficult for you guys to balance a budget. Well, that's kind of where I'm at, you know, I, I have a hard time planning anything. And, and so what we've always done in times past is those fixed expenses, things that you have to have to the bare bones to run the business. Those are the things that we pay out of county money. And anything else that we're able to get in the way of grants and donations goes to enhance the program and make improvements. And so we had planned on um, encumbering some money to, we've got our inventory process just about a hundred percent done now. And we have pictures of almost every artifact now in that system. Well, our plan was this year was to go to a um, uh, make that available to the public so that everybody in the public could sign on to our system and, and look through our collection and see what we actually have in all those hundreds of boxes. And um, that's about a thousand dollar expense per year to, to maintain that. We've put that off. We're not going to do it this year. Um, we were going to um, do an improvement on our computers. We've put that off this year. We're not going to do it. There's several other things that I have backed away from this year to try to make sure that I don't end up short cash flow wise. I'm, I'm trying not to touch the endowment funds that was created years ago. Um, we had a period of time, um, probably back uh, six to ten years ago where we were drawing money out of that. The board wasn't really quite informed and we were drawing money out of that and that uh, that fund diminished. And so we've been trying to put that money back so that we can be um, a proper steward of what the original intent was for that endowment. And I figure about another year and we'll be at a point to where we will have regained back to that position. And in the future, maybe be able to draw a little bit off of the interest on those monies to help fund the, the normal operation. Right now, I don't feel ethically um, and morally able to draw money off of that because we haven't put it back to its original condition before money was drawn out and appropriately. And so um, yeah, but I, I really feel like that, you know, we have a, about a hundred and forty-some members right now, which is the best that it's ever been uh, since I've been involved in it. Um, it still needs to be higher, but we basically have a lot of people that um, receive services from us that are citizens of the county that never compensate us in any way. And, and I feel like it's appropriate. People in the citizenry expects us to be there and expects us to do the job. And it seems only fair to me that, that some of that cost and that burden is shared across the entire community. that that, some of that cost and that burden is shared across the entire community. Uh, we're talking about a, a dollar a household, you know, that, a little bit more than a dollar a household to support this. Now, Eric's household would be a little more than maybe my household. Um, you know, but he doesn't have any munchkins to have to pay for, so I don't feel sorry for him. Uh, that, uh, that we know about. And um Yeah, I was gonna say, if I don't insult him at least once, he thinks I'm mad at him.
I just consider the sword.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. But I really do think from a philosophical point of view, it is totally appropriate that the county helps support this, this mission. Um, if we weren't there, I think the fabric of our community would be diminished. And, and even if we don't get money, we're gonna do everything that we can do to stay in business. I'm not saying that we'll go out of business, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's right for us to um, rob from other things to just pay the normal, normal bills. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, tell you more about. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of fluff in here. Tells you basically what we've been doing and all that stuff that, you know, you are getting the benefit of you know, there's a, there's a lot of people who are donating valuable time. I consider my time to be valuable because I don't have that much left, you know, that um you know, well, you know, I'm older than you, Eric. That's pretty old.
Yeah.
But I'm not as old as your dad.
Nobody's that old.
Yeah, nobody, yeah.
Your dad, your dirt's getting pretty close.
There's dirt and bent and township that's not as old as him, but um, yeah. But you know, if you notice on um, on one of my items here that, you know, we're now if I can find it. Twenty-five hundred and ninety-one hours were logged in twenty twenty-four that are volunteered unpaid time. And um, and mileage that is basically for those people to come and go and help us and for the other duties that they perform, you know, way over nine thousand miles are donated, you know.
On your online archives um, that you're working on, is that something you're going to tie to memberships? Because I know I sign up to be the mem- the membership and it is I think it's worth it. Like it's, it's cheap for most memberships around and I think um, that that could be a benefit because what I think is going to happen is when you turn that on and one person uses it, it's going to spread like wildfire and people are going to want to be, you know what I mean? And I was just thinking like, I, I mean, yes, the historical society is for everyone, but for everyone, they can go down there and, and look physically. But to have that opportunity to have that online and see everything, it'd be incredible.
Yeah.
As a member.
There's over, there's over two hundred, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty boxes of stuff. Now, if somebody comes in and, and I can do a search and if somebody says, I want to find everything that you got on Fred Stein. I can go on the computer and I can type that in and it'll tell me where every artifact is. There's a picture of it and where it's at. Is it in the display or is it in that box or is it in that box? And, and I don't want people to come in and expect me to open all those boxes for them, you know, so that they can look at something. But by having everything imaged and, and we put everything in there that tells about that that we can people can view that online. Now, we've talked about that. Is, is that an enhancement that we should charge for? And I would say that um that probably very few people would pay extra for that, that service.
Not extra, but part of the membership.
Yeah, part of the membership, yeah.
To drum up to your two hundred.
And our membership is, you know, twenty dollars a year, which is you know, but that does seem to stop a lot of people from becoming members, you know, people to pay that much money. And um, we want involvement. We want people to be involved in the organization and and uh, if we charged more, I, I don't know that we would necessarily gain more revenue.
No.
But I, when initially, when we started this concept of going through this process, we felt like that because the taxpayers were supporting our, our mission um, that we felt like that wouldn't be right to charge them for that service.
Makes sense.
And so like the citizens of the city of Atchison are supporting this, but the county citizens are not supporting this. And it's hard to draw a line, you know, you, that's just something that you can't do. And um but it, I think it, it would be something that would generate a lot of interest in the, our historical collection and other people possibly donating items. I, I, I think it would help in education. I think the schools would be able to use it a lot. Um, I, I think it'd be a great benefit, but right now I just don't have it in the budget to, to incur that expense. And it's um, and like I said, there's, there's things, other things that I'm cutting back on because I'm trying to be really conservative about. And I, I'm pretty tight. I mean, um I don't spend other people's money very well. And I was, now I'm, I'll fritter away my own money, you know, that's, that's on me. But if somebody else gives me money, I try to leverage it as, as much as I can. I try to get as much volunteer work as I can get. Um, you know, we're working on the Black Business District. Well, I'm trying to come up with, I'm trying to do it like I used to do with the Fair Association. Somebody say, we need a new roof. I say, okay, well, um, you find me the workers to put the roof on and, and I'll buy the material. You know, and so we were able to do that and um and actually get better bang for our buck. And that's what I try to do with the county money. Just like somebody gives me a grant, I feel like I have a real fiduciary responsibility here to spend this money as, as frugally as possible. They're always, you know, I'm always saving envelopes and, and you know, I, my mother taught me how to do all this. My mom would run the adding machine tape through the adding machine backwards. So that she, yeah, so that, you know, you never tore off a piece of adding machine tape in the office because you waited for it to roll up and then you turned around and you ran it through again. So uh, that's kind of the way I operate, but um.
You guys have any other questions for Mr. Kapling?
I don't. I'm glad, I'm, it, it's interesting to hear that you're getting uh, some of now, how do I put it? Traffic from the museum out at the airport. Uh, because you know, I
We can really tell.
Well, that's good. It's good to hear. And it's probably bleeding into other
Yeah.
part of the tourism aspects of Atchison.
There's another one coming up that is going to help us as well because you know, up at the college, they're doing that um, Constitution Hall thing. And that's, that's going to become a draw as well.
Right.
And um, and that's another thing that we're, you know, we have a meeting tonight and we're, and on our agenda, we're going to talk about what we, is the County Historical Society can do to contribute towards some overall general two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the nation, you know, the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That's something that's going to be in just a little over a year from now. It's not very far away. And I don't really hear too much going on in the community about that. I think that the college, because of Constitution Hall, is probably going to be doing something and and we may try to do something along with them, but it seems like the county and the city and everybody ought to get together and do some kind of coordinated um, celebration for that. I know a lot of other cities around the state. I, I'm in communication with other places through the Kansas Museum Association and the State Historical Soc- Association.
President Menace had a breakfast last Friday and brought all of us together and um, it's on my list to talk to you guys about uh, my notes from, from that meeting, but absolutely a collaboration to celebrate.
Yeah, I, it seems like we ought to have some kind of a special committee where we try to coordinate everybody's. Instead of everybody trying to invent the wheel on their own, you know, put something together that's coordinated, you know, around that event because it is, it's a big deal. I mean, I know that Kansas wasn't a state two hundred and fifty years ago, but we do have history. I've, I've recently reached out to the Kanza Indian Tribe down in Oklahoma because they were the occupants of this land two hundred and fifty years ago. And uh, so I'm hoping that maybe I can get them involved. I'd like to tie in their history with our community anyway because the, the actual capital city of the Kanza Nation was Donovan. It was the largest village that they had. And they had fifteen to twenty thousand people up there in their village when Lewis and Clark came through. Well, that's bigger than, that's almost what population is of our, our whole county right now. So they, they evidently had better economic development than we did. And so I don't know, maybe if they want our committee, you know, to help. Um, and it seems like anytime we want to get a new business in town or in the county, there's always roadblocks are thrown up. And um, and so I would I would suggest that we look at some of those things, you know, at, the county needs to be an instrumental part of economic development. That's a side issue. Got nothing to do with this, but I
I agree.
Heard your previous conversation and I, I, I so wanted to interject.
Thank you. All right. Anything else that we have for Mr. Kapling? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you might call this the Bill Putoff Memorial County Contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Next we have Pat Henderson, County Counselor with the First Judicial District Nomination Commission Resignation and Road Right-Away Update.
Um, those aren't tied together at all. Judges in Kansas are selected through a, a merit system and uh, that is district court judges. And that involves a committee and each nominating committee in each judicial district. Uh, Rosemary Niese has been on the on, on that committee for quite a long time. And with the retirement now that's been announced, but not officially announced of uh, Judge Wiley retiring this summer. There, there will be a, a need for that committee to meet and to select another judge or select a panel to be nominated as district judge. Um, Rosemary has indicated that she doesn't feel like she's uh, that she wants to serve any longer, that she can continue to serve on that. And so we need to, as a county, appoint um, another, a new representative to represent the citizens of the county on that. The uh, the makeup of that board involves uh, having two individuals that reside in the county other than judges. There's also judges that are appointed, or excuse me, other than lawyers. There are also lawyers that are appointed to that. So the person that you select should not be a lawyer. Uh, as with most other uh, committees, I think you have in the past advertised and invited people to uh, to respond to show that they have some interest in it. And uh, so that's the the process that I would suggest that you, uh, that you select here.
So should we just give a motion to our county clerk or just give county clerk guidance to advertise for that position? Okay.
I think that's it. And then set a deadline.
Until.
I would say two weeks maybe.
Okay, so if we appoint um, or hope to appoint on June third? Like two full weeks or?
Twenty-seventh.
Or the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
And we want make sure our verbiage says until appointed, like
Yes.
Like the hope would be, we solicit and we have recommendation on the May twenty-seventh then. Um, but the position will be open until fulfilled. Like there's no hard deadline on letters of interest.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
So do we need a motion?
Do we, we haven't really done motions in the past, just give guidance that.
I don't know if you have or not. I don't think a motion will be required.
Okay.
It will be to appoint, to appoint somebody, but.
Okay, perfect.
Right. Regarding uh, the, the road right of way, there have been a, a few places in the county where um, either citizens have reported, road and bridge maybe have reported or school bus drivers have reported that there is, are items that are stored in the right of way. Broken down equipment, uh, vehicles that are parked there, trash, things like that. This kind of goes hand in hand, I think, with the nuisance uh, discussion that we've worked, been a little bit involved, we've been involved with. And I think is, we also have actually on these be discussed even more today. There is a that, there's a at some point, we should, I, I don't know whether you want to have this complete discussion in the public setting or you want to have part of the discussion as an attorney-client uh, discussion, because when you're talking about specific landowners and uh, the condition of property, uh, I don't know if, to what degree you want that to be, you know, done in executive session instead of the public.
I mean, as long as we're not talking about names, I think it's appropriate to, to talk about it and.
Okay.
Just generalities.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, here, there are uh, just a handful of those that have been identified as having items in the right of way that form a, a little bit more of a danger uh, to the traveling public. And so uh, my in- intention has been on those properties is to immediately and with a very short deadline uh, demand compliance with with the statutes that require that people not use the right of way, not store things in the right of way. Um, but those will a lot of, there is significant overlap. There is one hundred percent overlap between the properties that have been identified as having property in the right of way with properties that are being discussed or having nuisances. It doesn't go the other way. There are several properties that have been identified as possibly being nuisance that do not have anything on the right. There are several of those, but the other way, there's a hundred percent overlap.
Should, or maybe this has already been taken care of, but there'd be language in there if we were going to notify them that there's things in the right of way that just, that it could be um, trigger the nuisance portion of that if it was just moved ten feet onto the, uh, onto the property, but that, I mean, shouldn't there be kind of a warning or a disclaimer there that, that just because they're going to move it on to their property, that this is taking care of the whole problem? When the nuisance ordinance looms?
That, that's exactly the concern that I had. If we notify them about items in the right of way and then they come move it ten feet and they send them a more detailed letter about nuisances that you may have people coming up and complaining. We did exactly what you asked us to do and you're still after us. And so I, I do, um, I, I have in the draft that I have prepared, tried to make it clear that um, this is preliminary and there are more, there's a bigger problem that needs to be addressed. Um, so that we don't, so that they do understand that this is the first step. But it's more immediate because with, with the nuisances, we typically have tried to work. Probably, we have definitely worked with landowners to try to get compliance. Uh, I guess land users, because it isn't always the owner, with the users of land to get compliance with nuisances. Uh, filing something with court has been uh, um, or a last resort for us. So we've generally tried to exhaust all other avenues before filing something with court. But we do need to make clear and will make clear that this is a first step. And you need to get these things fixed. But then also, there may be a broader concern with the nuisance. So.
So I see these as two different two different, completely different. And I understand what you're saying about they'll move them on to the nuisance. But our road right of way is maintained by a road and bridge and poses safety and, and prevents them from doing their job, whether it's mowing, cleaning. Safety and, and prevents them from doing their job, whether it's mowing, bleeding snow, all the things. And as far as the hundred percent, I had sent a road right of way, March sixth, two of them. And one of them is only road right of way, there's no nuisance attached to that. I had asked for you to send notification on March sixth and then again on April eighth. So if I could have an update on those two, that would be helpful. But I think that the channel comes from two different directions, like road and bridge. identifies road right of way issues and we funnel that through our attorney to get that cleaned up. The nuisance followed by the resolution, the commission, has nothing to do with road and bridge, but has to do with us. And Northeast Kansas Environmental, and I understand like the overlap, but I think that we need to be sure that we are edge, like we are. Cause I think at the end of the day, what we're looking for is what is the process to achieve a solution? And I know you had brought me my two and I communicated with them. And then after we talked as a commission, it's like, okay, it makes more sense to come from our attorney. This is the problem, send a letter, what are the next steps to get it cleaned up? Because even people that were compliant, yeah, sure, no problem. I mean, three months later, three months later, nothing, right? So what are the steps on the road right of way? You're sending a letter, did you send a letter?
Know that we have, that, that we've identified and really set out a, a process, because it's not. It, it's something that we've done before that I've done with the road and bridge department, but it's, it's been, I mean, it's been very sporadic. It's been one or two properties. And we, we've sent a, a, a demand letter to tell them to remove things from the, the prob, from the right of way. And then we followed up in person and I think we've got compliance with the ones that we've talked about. I, I take that back, we had some that we maybe. Maybe we want to go into executive session, because we're gonna be talking about specifics, but with. There are some places where people have constructed obstructions in the right of way with. Very substantial mailboxes that are built out into the right of way and those have some special considerations.
So we had a, a conversation about the process, all of us together on March fourth. And then I had emailed you just please send letters to the following two individuals on March sixth and then. At our meeting April eighth, you had said, well, I can't take direction from one commissioner. And we were all together and said, okay, well, here, please send these letters, so have we sent letters to those two people?
There, there, there were two of them that were there. I have talked personally with both of them, my understanding on the second one, that it is cleaned up. I have not been out to verify that, I have not.
Hay bales.
About two forty seconds. Because I, I had talked to the, the landowner. About it and he's.
So.
Was told that it had been cleaned up.
And so that's the thing I want to understand, because that was step one, right? That they're in my district, I called them, they said they would clean it up and nothing ever happened, so I thought that. That the direction was please send a letter from our attorney to them to show like. It's, there's tea to it, it's not a.
It's a documented thing.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's more official, I think, or documented, I like the personal interaction, I think that makes sense, but. How does that record it somehow, some way, is it, is it, you know? If we send a, how do we send, and, and that's another question, do we send certified letters, is that what we do when we send out? These notices?
I don't typically, but I, I know when any, any KES sends them out, they send their certified.
Okay, cause that, that was my next question, so how do we track, you know? That, that it was done and that was received and, and go from there, but I like the idea of. Saying, okay. Road right away, you have this much time. Here, and you have to, it's what he's saying, you have this much time and then touch on the other side of it, which is. You know, it's almost a hundred percent. Chance that it's gonna be a nuisance, if it's a right of way and it's a, it's a big enough. Issue, right of way issue, that it's probably gonna be a nuisance, not a hundred percent of time, but pretty close to that. So then, while you're at it, go ahead and touch on that, so I think that makes sense. The right of way is more important, it's obstructing, it's dangerous, get it taken care of. Oh, on the other hand, this is our nuisance law, you know, to those who have that dual issue. Not, not, you know, a mailbox that we were kind of talking about, that's, that's a right way, it's not necessarily nuisance, that's a right way. So you wouldn't necessarily, you know, go into the nuisance issue with that person, but for the ones that. You know, Pat says has that crossover, I think you have to do both, I don't know why. Cause you have to be open with people, I think, and explain that it could be a dual issue, it's not just one, but. For the short term, we need to, we need this one addressed and you've got to do it.
I think that there needs to be language, the priority is the right of way.
Yep.
But there needs to be some language, because at the end of the day, they're not gonna realize it's coming from two, it's gonna be looked at. As it's coming from the county, so if, while I was moving this piece of machinery out of the right of way. And then a week later I get a thing and now I need to remove it from the property, why didn't they just tell me that?
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, maybe the verbiage is as, as easy to understand as. While looking at this right of way, Northeast Kansas Environmental will be in touch, because. I mean, because at the end of the day, there's two processes, right? And we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're following the process, if someone reports a property of nuisance, it goes to you step one. Like that's, that's been step one, and then she investigates and sends out the correspondence, like I don't want to miss a step in. In either one, because we're trying to marry them together, because they're two separate, one statute, one's our resolution.
Right, but I just, I think there ought to be some. Recognition that there's another problem.
Yeah.
Then, and that'd be mentioned, because then that way, they probably just wouldn't shove it back. I mean, they could take a dozer, shove it onto their property and, and it'd even be worse than what it was before as far as the nuisance.
So, and to your point, you know, and it may not be this simple, but if I'm rectifying the roadway issue. And I know about the nuisance, maybe I'll do something.
Do it all in one smooth.
Right, so that's not a bad idea to do it that way. But just be clear and, and keep the same process with the nuisance issues, nuisance only issues. That, you know, with, with Martha and then, yeah, but, but I, I don't know about the visits, I just, it works with some, but it doesn't work with all. So then, to, to your point of try to do, you know, this, this single process. Then make, but make it work, do we just, do we just do letters? What, what's the, what's the best choice here for?
I mean, to me, is, is letters is the way to go, because that's documented dates and follow up timelines. Like, so if there's nothing done, you have a leg to stand on, it's not just, well, so and so told me three months ago. And that was kind of what we talked about, because I'm having conversations with my constituents and they're telling me those things, like, yeah, we'll get it cleaned up. Hey Joe, they'll be cleaning it up, don't worry about it, and he's like, we still can't mow, and so that's why. And, and I guess I need to understand too, like with our, it's the county councilor, if I ask, please send letters to the following two individuals. March, April, and we, and we haven't done that, so.
Well, so let's, I'll, 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 I'll. I'll move to, you know, to, to, to forge some kind of. Oh, better, better communication on it, better.
Documented letters.
Documented way to do it, if, if we need to. Vote on that and decide that that's the way to do it, whether it's a nuisance through Martha. Or whether it's a, a, a letter or whatever the combination is. From our attorney, that it just be a letter, so we do away with any of the visits.
Well, I think that.
Calls.
I think the first step of road right of way would be Joe's department sends an email to our county councilor, C C and commissioners. And there's a road right of way issue, here you go, then the letter can be initiated, we're all in the know. So then if I see, oh, that, that address is on mine, I can give them a heads up, right? Hey, just so you know, our attorney's gonna be sending you a letter, you need to clean up the road right of way, like it can all be.
Whatever you.
A collective, good outcome, and then the letter would outline, this is the problem, this is what you have to do by this date. And then what do we do after that, you know?
We have statute ten road policies on stuff in the right of way. And it's not, uh, what everybody realized, that it's safety also. Safety is a big thing, if somebody runs off the road and it's been sitting there for how long and they hit it. You know, we've got a couple instances where you only have to get a couple feet off the edge of the road. So, but, you know, process would be wonderful.
Also, the, I, I like that process, the statute, and I forgot to mention this to you. Statute K S A eight, H twenty eleven requires that. The local official, that a local official, and I think that could be road and bridge or because he the, the board of county commissioners. Has declared that, has determined on the basis of an investigation that there is a. Traffic hazard with the right of way, so that solves the, the issue with, if, if it's the.
So, just to, just to clear me up on this, so how does that process start? You, you. You look at the situation, go, okay, this is probably one, and, but do you follow up with our? G O S and like, I mean, do you?
We have, we've got, we've got the right of way lines and, and, and those things, I know on one, I can't talk about, but. I don't want to mention names, there is lines, we've brought that to the commission where they can see where the right of way is.
Okay.
And that's a place where there's possibly a structure built.
So that's part of the investigation.
Yeah, we, we make sure where our right of way is.
Okay.
You know, and then when we, when we travel the roads, we see something else, we have. Other taxpayers in the county get ahold of us and say, hey, we can't get through there and you guys are trying to plow snow, because there's not enough room. Get the snow off the road, you know, we, we keep track of those. There's hay bales stacked certain places throughout the county, I haven't said much about those, the equipment and stuff I have. But the hay bale thing would be something that, that is still, is still an object in the right of way, so.
Yeah.
But I'm not trying to, the main thing or the, the real hard stuff that's been there for years and years and years. And they just, they don't get moved, and I have talked to some of the individuals before, one in particular, three times. And nothing ever happens, so.
So, Pat, will you send us the, the draft and then that way we can go over the timeline that you're talking about?
I could print, the, the letters are written, I can get, I could, if you want to go in, yes, I can give them to you now.
Yeah, that's fine, and then they're certified, do we agree that they need to be. Certified or is there another option that, that's, that's better than that, but I mean. Certified, if I'm not mistaken, you, you, you know that the person received, I mean, that's, that's the whole.
Right.
I think that's a good idea.
There's expense of doing that and it's, it's, it's in tax or something like that.
All right, Martha, Northeast Kansas Environmental Services, nuisance follow-up, come on up.
I just wanted to add one comment to that, when we send out our letters, we send them via certified mail and regular mail. That way, if there has been a change of address, one or the other will come back, you can always refuse a certified letter, you know? We, and we do get those every once in a while, so if we get a, a certified letter refused, but the. Regular mail does not come back to us, we have to assume that they have received one or the other. So just, just FYI, we send them both ways.
Okay, thank you for that.
No problem.
All right, so we just wanted to get together with you and kind of. We won't be speaking of any person in particular, but kind of the process, right? Because we felt like we got the initial letter out and we've read the letter and some of them had deadlines of March twenty seventh. And so we followed up and kind of got back from you, like what you're hearing, but beyond that. Like what's next, so that we can ensure that there's a solution. Because it's like with everything, when we talk to people, they tell you, you know, one thing and then you see another. So we just kind of wanted to, to understand from you, you know, when people tell you, hey, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm gonna, you know, I'm working on. Reducing it, what kind of timeline do you give to them for that grace period of like? Is it thirty days? Okay, you're working on it in thirty days, or is there, what are the next steps?
Basically, if I give them a deadline of, you know, the initial letter will say, call us by, you know, May fifteenth. You know, so we can work with you to get the problem resolved, they call us back and say, okay, you know, we've started on this. We're, you know, we're starting to haul the vehicles out, we're starting to do whatever. Or, or, I'm, I'm, I've got health issues, you know, we're having a hard time, you know, then I work with them as far as that goes. Then, I make it very clear that they keep that line of communication with me. Because some of these are kind of remote and I don't usually make it by, some of them, I'm by there regularly, some of them not so much. So if they're calling me, keeping up and saying, hey, you know, I've, I've got five more vehicles moved, or I got that pile of tires, whatever the case may be. Keeping that line of communication is pertinent in, in my books.
Wonderful.
Because I can't always go to the far southeast corner of the county or, you know, whatever, I just don't always make it down there very often. When I feel like they have reported a decent amount of progress, then I'll say, okay, I'm gonna come by and just double check. If at that point they're blowing a story to me, then I will reach out to Mr. Henderson and say, hey, they're not doing anything. Do you want to, you know, move forward with legal action? So that's basically how, how we've been doing it. Now, most of them are good about reaching out, some of them will call you, you know, they may, may make an initial phone call. And then you, they ghost you, you don't hear anything, that's when I make a property check, you know, and nothing, you know, if nothing happens. Once again, I'll reach out to Mr. Henderson and say, hey, they're not doing anything. Cause that's kind of the, the guidance that I've been given, that he will pursue legal action if there's not any progress made. You know, for a particular property.
So that's good to know, because it usually starts with us, like we get anonymous complaint or a complaint with all the information. And we send it to you and then you'll send a letter, a copy of the letter to us, so we see, okay, she mailed it this date. She gave it until this date, and then really from our standpoint, we don't have to work, we just know that it's being cleaned up. Unless we hear back from you.
Correct.
So you'll email the commissioners back and say, no, there's no.
Progress.
Progress on this one, so. So we don't have, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll be honest with you, I need to be better about keeping you guys in the loop, you know, but, you know, when people call up and, you know. One particular property, you know, call me up and say, hey, you know, I've started on this, developed some health issues, you know, maybe a little bit. I'm like, give me, just call me back in two weeks, let me know if, if things are getting better, if you've gotten any progress made. I don't keep you guys, that seems like a lot.
Yeah, we don't need any of that, we just need to know next steps of, if you're not making progress, let us know and then we can initiate on our end.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Quick question, so. Just my little time here and the exposure I've had to nuisances. It, it probably can be pretty daunting, I mean, you talk about, you know, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm having health issues. There's probably a thousand different things that come your way when, when that happens.
Yes.
So when it comes to interpreting, okay, is, are, are we past the expected time? That this should be figured out, I need, I need more, I need input as to whether we. What we do, what, what the next step is. In the past and, and present, are you, is that, are you gonna relay that to us that, hey, we, this has been sixty days? And we've had, this is the, this has been the, my responses, you know, his, his or her responses. And then just say. Ultimately, what, what do we do, I mean, is that, is that, how does it work, that, that part?
Yeah, I mean. We have been kind of in an email loop, you know, with a couple of properties recently. And I can continue keeping everybody in that same, you know, group of people that are involved with some of these properties. And that's basically, you know, if I see a particular property is not making any progress, visible progress. Then, you know, I can send a, you know, an email out to the group and say, hey, do you guys want to move forward with legal action? You know, use that tool and, you know, let you guys, um, guide me in that part of it. So.
Good. So, and then I would like to address the, um, the, uh, resolution as it's, as it's written, um, and just to kind of make sure that we're on the same page. So that thirteen thirty-five resolution. Okay, so, um, it, it basically talks about more than just one thing. So it's not just, let's say, an inoperable vehicle or a construction, uh, um, uh, goods or it's, there, there's more to it than that. So it's. Where you would possibly have, um, let's see. Inoperable vehicles, household appliances and automobiles or other vehicle, uh, body part or bodies, uh, part or component junk or any material parts stored discarded in a manner conducive to the harboring of rats, mice, snakes, vermin to constitute a hazard or help fire or health of safety. And, and so some of these have more, uh, aspects to them than just one single, uh, item. There's actually crossover. There's, so, uh, so as, for instance, if I had, you know, five vehicles that were just sitting out in the open, they would also, it, it would fit into that. That sentence that I just read about having, so, um, I guess, I guess my question to you is, when, when you're looking at a situation like that, is it, it, are we addressing both of those or just working on a single aspect of that? Is, is the whole um, resolution being brought in or is it just part of it?
When I, are, are you talking when I address them in the letter? Or in what?
How you, how you, uh, how you?
Well, I mean, if you, just to use your example, if you have five vehicles sitting in your yard, you're not going to be able to mow around them. So all the grass is growing up. That's harborage for the rats, the snakes, the mice and all of those things that are going to travel onto the neighboring properties. So there's that aspect. If it's a vehicle sitting there, it's got fluids potentially that are going down into the ground to contaminate the groundwater. So yes, I mean, to me, they're all kind of inter, interrelated with each other. One is aiding the other, if you will. I mean, not directly. I mean, the groundwater is one thing. The harborage of vermin is another thing, but you're causing both of them with that, with that group of trash vehicles, whatever it might be in there.
Thank you. Cause I, I didn't know if some of these folks might have gotten that, well, it's just this one thing. And if I try to address that, um, it'll fix this. But in reality, it could still be part of those other issues too, if, if they don't address it rightly, if they don't, because it talks about specifically in here, open. And to where all those things are possible. And then it talks about if it's enclosed, then that's, that basically takes care of those other issues. In the next paragraph down, it says, if it's enclosed, we're not concerned about it because then it changes the, but I, I just want to make sure that that, uh, it's all, but it sounds like you've, you've, you've addressed that, that you've got that figured out.
Well, I think that there's been some confusion because there's been the, the presumption that they get fencing. And so this fencing, if it's out of sight, out of mind and it's okay, or fencing doesn't stop a rat or mosquitoes or anything like that. So I mean, where does that one thing end and the next began? I think it's where some of the confusion started.
Well, and I think that's all, you know, that, that was in the resolution that you guys drafted. And in my opinion, putting a Band-Aid over a sore to cover it up, you don't see the sore, but the sore is still there.
Correct.
And I think that's kind of what we're working with, you know, putting that Band-Aid up to where we can't see it, but the sore is still there.
Well, and from a common sense standpoint, for me as a commissioner, for someone like, are we worried about the health concerns and the, and the snakes and the rats that are invading the neighbor? Are we just gonna cover it up and forget about it? Like, that doesn't make any sense. So to me, maybe we need to look at the verbiage of, of that and maybe update it to where it. And I years past Eric's point, we have.
Well, I think that's where the confusion is because I think there's been an assumption that maybe enclosed is just enclosed in the fence. Uh, I think that's where that has kind of straddled the line a little bit. And let's be honest, if, if problems aren't seen, they, they don't get, you know, the attention. So I think that's been kind of, um, maybe a fallback or it's, it's vastly improved from the road. But then, you know, how, how strict of an interpretation are we gonna have? And so that's, I think that's kind of the, it's not right or wrong. It's just like how much are we gonna push complete cleanup over a fencing?
Right. And I think, you know, to Commissioner Quinn's point, you know, I think we assume too much common sense, you know? We send that resolution letter with all of our letters. They, we expect them to read it and understand and interpret it the way we do, and that doesn't always happen. So I think there's too much leeway on, on the property owner's part that says, you know, if you cover it up, if we can't see it, it's okay.
And I think to Commissioner Campbell's point of all of us just being on the same page of what the message is. Cause the message is the root cause, right? Like all the things breeding that have created this in two thousand and eleven of why it's even in, in place, right? Not so. Appreciate you having that conversation and clarifying that because in years past, it has been, oh, just fence it and it'll be okay. So, any other questions? Um, so, thank you for talking through the process. And you will send us, can you send us a, an updated list of what you're working on?
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
I can do that. And I'll be honest, I'll be better at getting letters out. You know, I go by properties and I see them. I'll make notes in the computer and then I'll be like, okay, I need to get, get the letter out. Next thing I know, I never did get that letter out to the property owner. So I definitely need to be better at doing that. So I will do that and we'll just continue working together as a group.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. So, um, the next was executive session. We're gonna move that down to the end because and then moving on with, um, Mark Zeltner, Finance Director. Consideration of P O, BG Consultants for Architectural and Engineering Services. Mark, um, I'm also, one thing I forgot to say in the additions to the agenda this morning is I was gonna put the road and bridge facility clarification of the sale proceeds, um, with your discussion now. So are you two okay with that?
Yes.
You wanna do that first?
Sure. So, yeah, in previous meetings, um, we had, um, made motions to uh, move forward with the road and bridge facility out at seventy-three and Mead Highway or Mead Road and seventy-three highway. Um, and we had given authorization to utilize senior village sale proceeds that are in a separate fund, um, and not to exceed that dollar amount. Um, and the due diligence done by the finance director, he was looking back at minutes and the specific dollar amount wasn't stated. So, um, I would just look for a motion to clarify that our road and bridge project will not exceed senior village sale proceeds of one million two hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Um, well, I, I, I agree with the sentiment. I think that that's a good place to start. I feel like putting that figure on it though. And now are we talking about specifically the main building? Cause that's, that's the, I think that's kind of where we were with the main, with the main facility that we're currently designing and, and working to, to get built and underway. I don't want to speak for the whole facility because it's, it's a phased in thing. So.
Oh, right. But right, authorized funds, right.
Facility itself, the main portion, the building, the, all that goes into that, I would, I would agree to that, yes. But I don't, I don't think that the, the whole facility, like, cause it's not, it's not all gonna happen
No.
right away. It's, it's, it's gonna have to be a phased in. So I will agree that that is the amount we have for the, what we have under construction at this point, the, the, the main facility itself. Yes. So the road and bridge facility itself.
No, you're fine. This is good conversation. So maybe the motion should be the current road and bridge facility project will not exceed this dollar amount. Because that's where I was at and like the architectural expenses, the grading, the fencing, all those things are gonna be coming off of this. And when you run out, we gotta figure out phase two. Like, there's gotta be a plan.
Thank you for that. Yes.
Yeah, I wanna add that, that is, it was alluded to, but we didn't state the figure. So that's what this vote is about. Is to clarify the, the figure for finance. So he has the hard figure to go along with. And I will second that motion as I, I was against the initial thing. I am for clarifying the number.
This number. Okay. So moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. There you go, sir. Yep, thank you.
Um, just further discussion on that is the board still has to approve every single purchase.
Yep.
Just because you approved that, if it's, if you spend a penny, you still have to approve a penny. So.
Perfect. That's what we want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so what I have about BG Consultants is, um, an amount that you approved prior of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars for engineering services. This is a purchase order coming off that total of four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. The remaining contract balance is fifty-eight thousand, two forty for engineering services. Still yet to be paid.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our finance director to BG Consultants in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
And this is for?
Professional Architectural and Engineering Services.
On road and bridge.
Yes, okay.
All second, move to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes, all those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Passes two to one. All right. Thank you, Mark.
And I'm here to fill in for the next agenda item.
Okay. So next we have the request for payment to L and L Construction and U S B three seventy-seven for the sports complex.
Okay. So it appears that L and L Construction had a change order to the building concession and bathroom. Um, it looks like four thousand, five hundred and six dollars is the change order to paint um, interior rooms, assemble a sink base, install the sink, construct new window coverings. And furnish and install four toilet tissue dispensers. Um, so this is in addition to what you guys have already allotted. So this is extra. The project was complete. Um, and L and L Construction had their total paid to them, but this is just the change order.
Ms. Reddingham or say, or for, for here?
For here.
Okay, okay.
So there's two different things here. One's to L and L and then one's three seventy-seven?
Right.
Yep. Look for a motion for other, um, to approve the request for payment for the Asherson Sports Complex in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and six dollars to L and L Construction.
So move.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right.
Um, one thing with that that maybe we should clarify is, is that total supposed to come off of their four hundred thousand total they were allotted?
Yes.
Okay. Because the other L and L Construction was a part of it too. Okay. I'll, I'll add that to my spreadsheet. Um, the next one is the second quarter payment, um, maintenance payment for Effingham and Asherson. So Effingham is two thousand, five hundred dollars. And Asherson is ten thousand dollars even. Total twelve thousand, five hundred.
So this is just our quarterly?
Yep.
All right. So I look for a motion to approve the quarterly, uh, management operating, um, written request as presented for second quarter maintenance as presented by our finance director. Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have Shannon Neal, um, for the Extension Council and the twenty twenty-six budget request. Shannon Neal and T Young.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna stand here because, um, Clarissa's got the, the bulk of everything, but, uh, we appreciate your time today. Um, and we wanted to start, uh, before we start with the budget, um, and getting that to you is, uh, we wanted to let you know, um, exciting news that we did, um, as the extension board vote to uh, move forward with districting. So what we would like, um, and what we would like to ask you is your support um, in the form of a, of a resolution. Um, that would be with Brown, Donovan and Asherson Counties. And, um, all three counties, um, will be communicated with by the end of the month. And they'll be asking their commissioners on the same thing to, to approve the, the resolution. So, um, I guess, what questions?
Uh, how is that, I mean, how soon is that gonna come to fruition? If everybody agrees, all the three counties, and then when would that take place?
So it's a, unfortunately, it's not a quick process. So it would actually, um, go into effect July first of twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Well, then how will that affect funding? Cause like if we do a partial year or, I mean, how, I mean, because then it will become a taxing district.
It will, but that's, my, it's my understanding that taxing district would start in January first of twenty-seven, correct? That's when it would take over.
Okay, so it would be another full year. Okay. I was just wondering what, how those things, cause you know, and everything from different, uh, budget years, calendars and, and everything else.
Yes.
Um, curious how that would fit in together.
Right.
Cause it's got a mesh.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I clarified that this morning.
What happens? Well, yeah, I mean, I, I can understand, it could happen in the middle of the year and then you would have, uh, you know, it would be a nightmare for
Yes.
Both the clerks and the counties, because they're gonna have to start assessing a new taxing district to take effect and then the funds actually get there. So.
Yes, great question.
My question is, how does it affect the, uh, the leadership from top to bottom, redistricting? What, what does that do when you find those?
Yes. So there are many extensions, just to, to give you a little bit of background. There's, there's many extension districts across the state of Kansas. Um, it started in
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, thank you. Um, and so basically, you know, we would have, um, we'd have someone that would be in charge, um, from all the extension agents. So there'd be kind of a director over, over that.
Okay.
Um, and then all of the counties, uh, depending on what, um, what they're bringing. It, it allows us to have specialized, more specialized agents. So, um, we would still have two agents in our county. Um, it would just be dependent on what they wanted to specialize in. Um, and each of the other two counties are also um, would have the, the ability to have two agents, because that's what K-State, um, would prefer that they have. Um, and so that's kind of the way that it would work. Um, everything would, you know, we would still have our fair, like our four H would still run. Like everything would run, like within your county. Um, we would just have the option to, if another county has a specialization, um, from an agent, then, right, it would be more, not that it's not today, but it would definitely be more accessible. Um, then, you know, currently we would need to, you know, go through a few more hoops to get, to get that help, um, here that, that we would need.
So each county is, has four representatives in the board.
Oh, yeah, sorry, the board.
I think that's. So you have four representatives and so that your board would just, will it combine or will you?
It would combine. So each, each person, or each county would have four representatives. Um, and then we right now, um, have a nine, nine member board. Um, so we wouldn't, it, it would be twelve, uh, based on the three, um, counties. We would, um, still have our P D Cs. So we currently function with program development committees or P D Cs. So each area of that K-State, um, would be, um, you know, working. We, we would have areas that we would be working. We have P D Cs for those, um, development areas to try to bring programs and needs, um, to the community. And so we would still have those, um, those have six, six people each, um, would be on those P D Cs. So that would still stay local. Um, and that would help determine the programming, um, that our county needs, um, specifically. Um, but we could again, you know, go across.
And I would imagine you have a model, looking at other counties that have recently combined, the way you're talking about doing. You have a model of how they, how they handle that. So, you know, cause, you know, we've seen different scenarios where you do make the combination, you know, combine, but then at the upper level, you know, at the upper level, you know, how do they all fit together, is there gonna be you know, the board, and then you, are you gonna have execs, or, and how long that's gonna work, but you have a model uh, figured out, so that's good.
K-State has a model.
Something you can look at to make that transition.
Yes, sir, and it's, it's very, you know, it's, since ninety-one, um, there are quite a few districts in the state of Kansas.
Well, sixty-three.
That's so exciting. It's like, this has been such a long time coming, and kudos to all of you for having the conversations and getting there, um. I'm excited, I've been working, I'm on one of the Northeast Kansas boards that he was referencing, and I'm, you know, building relationships with Brown County Commissioners, and love to lean on Donovan County for questions, and it's just good, it's just really good to everybody be on the same page and marching the same direction, so.
Yeah, I, I was helped develop the Northeast Kansas Board of Health, because served on when I was a county commissioner, and, you know, I think it is, it's great to get really close relationships with the other counties.
Yeah, no, it's really good, I enjoy hearing Rich's perspective on several things, he serves with me on that one, so, awesome.
Other questions regarding that, um, we'll let Clarissa get to that.
Would you like?
I've just got with the petition.
Sorry.
I've got one question, uh, so in the future, when you submit will your budgets be submitted by county? For approval, so will, there'll still be an Hatcheson County budget, or will there be?
It would be based on a mill levy.
Um, on a mill levy, so then who, how does that get approved, or, and what board, who's overseeing that? I mean, is it?
I'm not exactly, Carla can.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Carla Divacek, I'm the Eastern Region Director for K-State Research and Extension, and um, the District Board, the first board on July first of twenty twenty-six, cuz I'm being optimistic, will be appointed um, from you all, so you can select who those individuals are. And then after that, they are elected on the general election ballot in um, odd-numbered years. So it's up for public election, which is a lot, lot more accessible to folks probably than the way we do it now. Even though it's open to the public now, it would be easier if it was on the ballot. And then um, that District Governing Board of twelve people will establish the mill levy. But just like with other taxing entities, there, if they exceed revenue neutral, they have to have a hearing, and they, it'll have to be published and all of the things they have to follow, like any taxing entity.
Okay, I was just wondering, cuz it's, it's a new model, and just, how, the, the, the public's gonna ask, well, how is this, who approves?
And they should, they should, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we do have that resolution, if you would like that to date, Casey, just so you have it, um, and if you have other questions later, um, we're happy to, to come back, or if we need to have a working session, uh, we wanna make sure that all your, all of y'all's questions are answered.
Um, what resolution number would this be when I read it?
Is that something we're approved today, or can we have time to, uh? I mean, I'm not, just, cuz this is the first time we've seen it, right? Maybe put it on next week's agenda.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, I wasn't, I just wanted to make sure that you had it, and, and we wanna make sure that you have your questions answered, so if we need to come back, whatever we need to do, we wanna make sure that you all have your answers and everything.
I didn't think there was a push there.
Um, no, you can keep that, that's yours.
Yeah, it's always best to take your time to read.
Absolutely, yeah, we, we want you guys to, and come back to us with any questions, um, anything that, that you have, we wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to, to look that through and um, have all of your questions answered.
And then when we get it, when it, when it passes, then we get back to you?
Yes, please, sir. Awesome, thanks, Gus.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So here is the twenty twenty-six budget that the board approved, uh, give us a little more room to hire another agent and continuing our programming that we had when we were a fully functional office.
Okay.
Have they sent this to us, Mark? So we may make a copy of this for Mark.
Can we keep this one?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Because we'll, that way we sign and we'll scan it back to you and.
Yes, perfect. Any additional questions for us, and anything, I guess, related?
Guys have any questions?
Like Eric, I'll read through these things, and I'm sure I'll have some.
Perfect, we welcome those and happy to answer them.
On a different note, I have programs for the summer that we are putting out. We do have a intern coming in that's gonna help us put on some of these fun little youth programs. We're very excited about keeping our four-H active and moving and getting prepped for our fair season.
That's awesome.
Oh, thank you. You got a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, I just thought about, um, because our budget timeline, like your appropriation will be funneled at the end of our budget season, but on this, I assume the other counties are also gonna be going through the budget season, and so they're gonna wanna know, like, where everybody's at, um, so do you guys have, uh, I mean, surely we, we would be able to read and put this on next week's agenda to know what direction, is that fine? The twentieth, okay, alright. Okay, I just wanna make sure that everybody is communicating of how each county feels about it, and.
Right.
Yes, and within the next two weeks, Donovan and Brown both will.
Okay. Okay, cool, so it will be within May, basically.
Of course, my brain is going ten different directions on this, so is there anything that would impact decisions? If we would choose not to increase the, the ask, but, but then now and instead keep funding the same, would that affect, because then that will reflect into the budget in the future. So how does that gonna affect the other counties approving, or are they gonna say, well, you know, your liability, or, you know, uh, how is this all gonna mesh and fit?
Okay, uh, Matt Young, I'm the Brown County Extension Agent, live in Hatcheson County, um, and so I'm part of these three counties going together. You guys could handle that a number of different ways. So when we become a district, our money comes out of your budget. That leaves room in there, your county appropriation comes out, as far as that's still in your budget for the following year. So if you mess with the up or down, whether you do a cut or you do an increase, that will adjust your budget going forward, keeping under the revenue neutral rate, because we will no longer be part of that. Also, it will adjust how much we get as a district, because if you increase it, you're raising the mill levy that we would go into a district app. Where if you would decrease it, you're lowering the mill levy we would go into a district.
I, I don't anticipate a decrease, I mean, that's, that, I, and maybe an increase, but if it's, I, I don't know, I'm just doing a theoretical thing of how if it's raised, it will affect our twenty twenty-six budget, and you're still gonna be part of our twenty twenty-six budget.
Right.
Completely.
Yes.
But how does that affect it beyond that, because that, you're gonna be, well, you're gonna be subject to the R and R. So if it's lower, it would affect that R and R number. So that's what I'm, I'm grasping that, the nuances between going from one type of funding to another and how that's gonna affect.
And I would say that we've asked for, what we've asked for this year is to allow us to get back to a two-agent county. Currently, we as a board cannot hire someone else at the current level of funding that we are at, because we would have to make a decision, and I'm not will, of, of who is going and who is staying, and I'm not, we're not willing to do that. So currently, at the current rate, you know, we, we cannot hire that, that second agent.
I guess that was more.
The mill levy is currently would not allow two agents.
And so that could affect how the structure would go going forward, because then you would be coming in as a one, one-agent county. Uh, I'm just trying to get everything on the, so people understand that if there's an increase, why, uh, why it could happen now, or why it should happen now or not. And so I, I just wanna get things that everybody understands and that we've asked the right question. And I wanna make sure I'm on the right way, if that I'm thinking correctly, I have a, so, thank you.
Yeah, and the fact that we only have one agent is severely impacting the services we're providing. Clarissa's working very hard, harder than I wish she was working, but that's.
That's one of the things I was gonna echo from a citizen's standpoint, of like, reducing from two to one, like, we all understand you were doing fantastic and nothing, like, I've only heard great things about all the things you're doing, so, thank you for taking that burden on and running with it, because from a constituent standpoint, I've heard nothing but positive, so, yeah.
Yeah, particularly services in town that are seriously impacting. Taylor had just started some good things, and that need good model to proceed.
Are you guys good if I ask him to scan these and put them on our social media?
No, that's fine.
I'm, I put a sticky note on there, I just wanted to make sure. Do you guys have any other questions? You have what? Oh, wonderful. Okay, and then I'll give it to her, that sounds good, thank you.
Other questions?
I don't have anything, the only thing I have is generally correct me if I'm wrong here, but when you combine services, two things happen, you, you know, you, you gain because you're able to pull from different sources, and so but sometimes it actually helps with the, the, the funding side of it, in, in other words, it in some respects, it, it lowers it, but you gotta know, that's not predictive here, what you're saying is, give us what we've, we've had in the past, and then with this, we, we, we actually increase. But, but you're not, there's no chance that it'll reduce any.
I can speak to that.
The budget.
Historically, like the Middle York District to your west with um, Jackson, Jefferson, and Nima Hong Counties, they've been a district for not certain the number of years, but quite some time, but they've actually been able to reduce the mill levy over time. Just with increased, and most of our districts can show that it's, it's excellent.
And you would think that, because if you're drawing from the three versus each individually, then you can share, you know, in those services, okay.
Yes, so when you initially go in, you go with a blended average of the three counties, so that's how your first mill levy is set. And then at that point, yes, the efficiencies start to come in, but in that first year, we're probably gonna have to get a few things up to speed.
Sure.
So everybody has equal amount of equipment and up-to-date computers and all those kinds of things.
Hire another.
Hire another agent, which is gonna have a little additional cost. Yeah, you're very much right, go down five, ten years out, you're probably gonna see the mill levy go down because of efficiencies.
Okay, sounds good.
Would you like for us to come back next week, or do you wanna reach out, if you have questions between now and then, how do you, how would you all like to handle that?
Would just reach out.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And everybody else, she and his contact, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I don't anticipate anything, but it's just like, I like reading things on.
Absolutely, like I said, we're here to answer your questions, so please feel free to reach out.
And if any of our constituents come to us with questions, then we can get those answers and.
Unblocked, boy.
Sounds good.
Perfect, well, thank you all very much for your time.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
In the blue folder for the next week, so we have a copy yet for us.
We make copies of that, with our request, and then that way I'm, cuz I'm.
Sorry, yes, good call, all, yeah.
One for each of us, and then keep them, my hard copies.
Yeah, me too, good, good call.
Very good.
Our programs, like, surprised to see them.
Yeah, so, thank you. This looks like the same resolution we adopted on the twenty-fourth, it's like it's substantially the same, that would level.
So we have noon to one for Memorial Hall. Um, and then one to one-thirty county clerk and election budget, one-thirty to two for Joe Snyder, Ridenbridge Superintendent Budget Request. And then we'll return to, so we, sorry, we recessed workshop, and then we'll return to order uh, with Joe Snyder to come with the considerations of agreements.
So we can need to recess now, or are we gonna wait till noon?
Um. Doesn't really matter, whether. Yeah, go ahead and do that, I just thought that was good.
There's that executive session. Oh, that one will be this.
When Eric gets back, Pat, would you wanna give an update on how the tax sale went last Tuesday?
I'm sure.
I was just thinking about that, um, I heard positive things.
It went as smoothly as any I've ever done.
That's great. Did you think that Main Street program, uh, invite?
It did.
So we probably need to have, if you're gonna attend, I'm gonna attend, we'll have our clerk send out a special notice that we'll all be in attendance um, to that. I, I responded to where I was gonna attend, um.
Put that out, I can't remember.
I need to ask Eric if he got it too.
Susan put that out?
Uh, Jill Thorne from the chamber, from the main. Uh, Jill Thorne from the chamber, from the Main Street Chamber.
Really, it's. I'm I'm looking for it. Did she, I think.
She blind CC'd all the elected officials, so. But it came Monday, five twelve at one fifty, if that helps.
Oh, yeah.
Feel like we could double our time on Tuesday and still.
I know. It's a lot of things to talk about.
There's so many things.
Yeah.
I'm like, I should probably go ahead and make arrangements for my kids to be picked up.
And I keep thinking about like this uh extension council redistricting thing. Like, how will we know when it's done? How will we know when to take it off County Levy? How will we know? How will they coordinate with Susan? To get the needed documentation that their taxing district would need. Like, there's a lot of things that they will have to do.
Yeah, I think.
To notify us.
Carlo will probably be that point person once we get there.
Cause there's.
And also.
We have to do on the, for the state too.
I'm glad they gave us that timeline of knowing by the end of May, because then maybe June third. Um, we can make a reminder or something just to follow up with She- Shana. I'm sure Shana will share with us. She's our, the head of Atchison. That's a good, you have her contact. You might just maybe. Follow up and CC Susan in so that at least there's something of like someone's gonna initiate a follow up. Good questions. Things that. If not, if we don't determine a path forward, it's all through the cracks. It's not on here, but we probably should give some direction on the photography at County Lake too. Um, so let's remember.
Wanting to do that.
Well, and I, to me, here's my thing. One way or another, it's a benefit.
Yeah, could you sell updated images?
Regardless, yeah, of what direction you go, but. We need to talk about that too.
Regardless of what direction, well, I guess. If you don't go in the direction of selling, then they come back with some. Price point of services that they've already done too, so.
What's our next?
Uh, I was gonna have, let Pat give an update on a tax sale and then we'll go into recess into workshop at noon for um. Whenever Eric comes back in, I was trying to wait for him. He's probably was.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Is there an executive session?
So I moved it down to the end because of our timeline. We were. There's. Not enough time in the day. And I know that, like, I know the um. It's hard. To pre-schedule those things because it's like something you could. Think could take ten minutes.
Yeah.
And and also when you're engaged, you don't want to just like. Ten minute, yeah, because otherwise it's gonna be a coming back to do it all over again and.
Is that text back to you about that house? You were right about the address.
I asked Pat if he wants to give a quick five minute update on the tax sale from last week. And he said absolutely. So when Mr. Campbell gets back, he'll just give us how it went.
But uh, yeah. The taxes are paid, I.
Think. That's what it was last year, not this year.
Well, they're not.
Right. But I, what I was getting at is, apparently it appears to be abandoned by extension. That's why questions you isn't adding this in a major.
Well. The tax.
Gosh, right, right up here.
And I think that's part of goodness is.
They have to be at least a year, they have to be at least a year delinquent or they they. They have to be at least a year after the September first. The first half or the December is around half of the year in May, and then if they're not paid in September, the Fraser Republic. They have to be a year of that.
Oh, did you get the email from Jill about the Main Street program?
Seems like.
Uh, she sent it yesterday at one fifty.
I think I did, but I didn't.
Are you? They're having elected officials on May twenty first. At three fifteen, so I just need to let Susan know to put out something if we're gonna all be in attendance. Um, all right, so Pat, there's three minutes. You think you can give a tax sale update?
Yes, uh, we've, we had the the tax sale for. Twenty twenty five last week. On May sixth at Memorial Hall. Uh, this process started with losing forty or fifty tracks by the time of sale, we were down to thirteen of those. There were a couple that were removed because of questions of service of process, but for the most part, they were. Removed because taxes were paid by properties. Uh, those thirteen tracks all sold, which is, I think, the first time we've had a sale where every tract sold. And that was a good thing. Uh, there were two of the tracks that sold for more than the amount of the judgment. Uh, and so on those two tracks, we will be. We have asked the court to determine the amount of the overpayment to refund it to the person or. Persons that are entitled to the money. Um, I filed a motion for confirmation of the sale, that is to have the the court look at everything involving the. The sale and make sure that it was done appropriately. And if there's anyone that has an objection to the process or to the results that we've. Reported them incorrectly or something that they have a. Opportunity to be heard, and that will be held by the court on June ninth. They do that on Mondays, May twenty sixth is the holiday, June second, the judge was gone, so June ninth was the the first date available date for that. I don't anticipate there being. Any objections, but I. I guess we'll just have to wait and see. So uh, we've also started with the process of identifying the properties to be placed on the next tax sale. And there are. Well, there are several, but uh, it's it it's going to be a manageable number again. So in the few, next few weeks, you'll see a. Request for appropriation of funds to do the abstracting, so we can get started with the. Process for the next group.
Awesome.
How many tracks did you say so?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yes.
I think it would probably be helpful too if in maybe the next couple of weeks, we could have an agenda item to talk through what that process looks like. So I know people can go on the county website and see delinquent taxes and have questions. I'm like, hey, this one has this many taxes. Why isn't it on the tax sale and? Just to under, help understand the process from beginning to end, especially if we're gearing up for next years. So. Awesome. All right, well.
Set a date for them?
Sure, you tell me what works for you. May twenty seventh?
Uh, May twenty seventh would be great.
Okay. Um, I'd look for a motion to recess into um a Memorial Hall. Well, actually workshop for a Memorial Hall discussion from twelve to one. Uh, we have the county clerk from one to one thirty for her twenty twenty six budget request. And then we have Rodenbridge Superintendent from one thirty to two for the twenty twenty six budget request. And then we will return to order at two P M. Do you have a motion? Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes. Three to zero. And it is recording?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, awesome. We are, I would like to uh make a motion to return to order. I guess I don't need to, like, we're back, we're returning to work. Um, Joe Snyder, Rodenbridge, consideration of agreements to Kings Construction and consideration of P O to Tunks Construction.
So Kings was selected on the Ottawa Road project. And we just need to sign the agreement with them. There's three copies. First one, the date. And then the second one. Has the signatures and the clerk's signature also. Just for phase two of Ottawa Road. Rehabilitation. And. There are three of them. Yep, there's a date one and.
Okay, and remind me, is this for something we've already voted on within?
This is.
Construction contract.
Yes.
Amount one million, two eighteen.
Yes.
Twenty two.
Yes.
Um, for Ottawa Road, Phase Two Reconstruction. Um, is there anything in here about change orders or we're, we're locked in at the amount we're agreeing to?
If there's a, if there's a change order, it has to be okay.
Um, all right, so this agreement. Look for a motion to approve the Ottawa Road RS twenty one Phase Two Reconstruction Project. Number C dash fifty three oh nine dash zero one in Atchison County, Kansas. For the Ottawa Road, which is two forty second road to two sixty two on Ottawa Road. Uh, in the amount of one million, two eighteen, twenty two. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is.
There is, there is a typo. I just noticed it's two forty sixth road instead of two forty two.
Okay. So on this thirteenth. Day of May.
And this is part of our million dollar grant.
Thank you.
Uh, P O for Tunks from construction. On uh. Phase one, the three large tubes for a hundred and seventy five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. This is, we've, they were chosen out of five different. Contractors. Uh, so they have a pay schedule that we go through the. Uh, engineer with. And with their request, them thirty four thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and twenty eight cents. And you were asking about change orders, and this is, I will show you, these go through. The engineer and me, if it's a small enough change order, I okay, if it's something that would be big, I would bring to you guys. So the uh, the dirt they were supposed to be able to use to. That they dug out to put the culvert back in. And it stated that in the contract, well, it was all rocks. And we didn't feel like it was suitable and they didn't either. So for them to haul off the, that was twenty one hundred and seven dollars and ten cents, and I'll give you guys this, you can. You can have these copies if you'd like to look at. And then there's a ten percent retainage. That, that's why it goes through Swabe. And then at the end, we still have a ten percent on every pay. So.
So did you say if this one's only thirty four?
Right, but we don't have a P O for the whole amount. So then when we pay them.
Already.
Yes, we've already agreed and accepted their, had signed agreements and everything.
Okay.
And then that. Bottom on them, on the right where it says thirty four. That's what we're paying them right now.
Okay, so will we do this like? In increments, will we do a purchase order per time or just a an authorization of payment? I'm ask, I guess I'm asking your opinion. Cause I feel like, like for the sports complex, for instance, as we were doing, we were doing increments.
Increments is how I would suggest.
Okay.
Okay, so are you okay if I just mark out?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Actually, I can leave that total in the total order down here, put the thirty four.
Four, and then we can minus that off. So if we just do that from now on.
And that is for, okay. And then.
They're getting every two weeks.
Okay. And then uh my other question would be, before we authorize this. We've already done the walkthrough that it's acceptable. Like the project.
They've done so, and there's an engineer with them right now.
Okay.
So everything they're doing, the engineer was there when we looked at the. At the uh spoils that came out of the hole. We discussed it. The engineer was there yesterday when they were setting the tube in the ground. He marked the center of the tube, center of the ditch. Uh, they're, they're doing their. Their inspection while they're doing that. And what we will do is we are going to haul the new dirt in. So that we're not charged for that. And we just have to, we just have to pay for the dirt.
Okay, so we haul, they hauled off for twenty one oh seven.
Yes.
To our new facility location.
No, they, they had, they, they had a deal with a local farmer.
Okay.
They took it right there, so they didn't have to pull it very far.
Is it material we could have used?
No.
Okay.
It was just muck and, and chunks of rock.
Um, all right, I look for a motion to approve the purchase order to Tunks Construction in the amount of thirty four thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and twenty eight cents. Uh, for an incremental payment um for the three large culvert replacements, the total project cost of one seventy five, sixty.
Some of.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
If I have time, just to add one more thing to let everybody know that they're. To be starting the bridge on Finney Road tomorrow. They're moving their equipment in today, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the zoning and planning discussion.
I I printed out two uh drafts of resolutions for your consideration. One of them. Is a.
is a resolution that uh establishes a planning commission, which is the first step towards zoning under the Kansas statutes. And it is uh the statute doesn't have a specific number of people that have to be on it. Uh seven seems to be popular. Uh there, I've seen some with nine, I've seen, I think five is the minimum requirement under the statute. But in addition to just picking a number, you also need to be either come up with a, a method of how they are appointed or finding people to appoint. Um yeah, and so that's uh there, there's going to be some time investment involved with it, so they have to be people that are, are willing to uh to put in the work for it. So anyway, that's the, the first of the two resolutions. There is a second draft resolution that imposes a moratorium on new forests. In, you know, the and these, I, I think could go into a single uh a single resolution, but in future years, if I'm just looking back at things, I think it makes it a little harder to follow if they are together. The uh the resolution on the moratorium includes some language about that you had adopted the other resolution. That doesn't necessarily have to be the case, although the, clearly the, the resolution with the moratorium envisions that you're going to begin that process, it doesn't necessarily require that you have adopted that resolution before or at the same time you adopt a moratorium or selection. Although if you don't adopt if you adopt the moratorium and don't do anything else, don't, don't even start on the process of of uh doing the, the planning or you'd be subject to significant scrutiny by a court if somebody were to challenge, why are you doing the moratorium? You said you were doing the moratorium because you were beginning this planning process and you haven't started.
If we were gonna start a planning commission. And they got halfway through the and there was no heart for, how is the planning commission dissolved?
If you got halfway through, then what happened?
And there was no heart to, to pursue it any further and?
I, I think a separate resolution from you rescinding it.
Okay.
Rescinding the resolution.
I, I just didn't see any.
You're correct, I did not put anything in there because I didn't envision. Usually that process involves them coming up with a with a proposal, a plan that they submit to you for approval. So I think if there's a point at which, I don't think the planning commission would be the appropriate body to determine, we're not interested in pursuing this further. I think they, they still have an obligation, if appointed, to uh to create the plan. And then it would be up to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt or not adopt that plan or to modify the proposal.
But if it's not, if they, if it's not adopted, do they just cease to exist?
I, I think you do a I think we would address that in a resolution at that point to uh well, to do what you want to do, which would most likely be to to terminate the planning commission.
So you could have a Board of County Commission that implements zoning. And then turn around and have a Board of County Commission revert and take away zoning?
You're not. Yes. You could do that, just like any, any other resolution that you've adopted, a future board could change that. Uh by adopting this resolution, you are not adopting something. You are appointing a group to study land use planning. And you're considering adopting something, but you're not adopting something with this.
And is establishing the commission planning commission completely up to the board on how they wanna do that? Because on C, it says a minimum of two persons on the planning commission shall reside in each commissioner district. Well, District One would have no skin in the game as far as it affecting them, so.
No, um that's not required. That's that is language that was uh universally included in the samples that I looked at, but we have a unique situation. With the first district including being, being encompassed within the city. So, no, that could easily be taken out.
So what? How, how would you? How would you uh split it up then?
Well, I mean, if you want seven, there's seven townships that you could have appointees from the rural areas, I mean, to me, if, if you're making plans for the future, you want the people affected to have a voice or develop a plan, right?
Yeah, I think with seven, you, you give that you have plenty of that out there, but uh I, I don't know that there's a requirement, but it'd be an odd number, but um makes sense. It, yeah, because of voids at, at high. We, we have uh if, if you just go with the townships, there are eight, eight townships, which is an even number, so you'd have to have one additional person.
We'll go to nine.
Right. Right, well, but we have, we have eight townships, so some township we have two.
Or somebody at large, I mean, when you have that much representation from the rural area, I don't think.
Sure don't like the premise that you have to identify and have a whole plan before you decide what you're gonna implement or you're basically point out all your faults or perceived faults before you decide whether I'm gonna you know, you're, you're looking at one thing. But you're pointing out all of this other. That, that just doesn't make sense to me.
What's one, did you wanna look at a copy of it?
Sure.
I'll make a copy, I know you came back for this part of the meeting.
I make a comment too here, in your discussion here. I'm gonna ask Pat a question here, uh are you applying then uh? You know, let's say this committee gets together and gives the commissioners approval, go ahead and zone. But let me help me understand the zoning process. You know, they could zone just against big corporations coming into the county, it wouldn't be affecting the residents of the county. Is that correct?
That's a, sure, yeah.
You can, you can set zoning up like that. It'd just be against big corporations, especially.
Well, you, you, you can't I don't think there's a way to do it based on ownership. Uh it's, it's based on land use. And uh so I don't think you could do, have it would not be zoning if you prohibited a certain class of people or even entities from owning property.
Or controlling property or using property in the county for their own use. But, I mean, well, they wouldn't really own the property, but make use of the property somehow. You know, well, I mean, in the future, they could own property too, the corporations could.
There, there are a number of corporations that own farmland in Atchison County already.
Right.
Uh not all of them are what people think of when they think of corporate farming. Um I mean, most of them, the, the vast majority of them are small, closely held corporations that are owned, you know, maybe by a family and, and their, their children. Zoning would not be an appropriate vehicle to prohibit that type of ownership. And I, I haven't seen that as a that as a proposed goal or as a a, a problem to be fixed with something.
Pat, I have a question, what if, cause I, I had heard rumors a couple years ago about another quarry possibly opening up in the western part of the county, extreme western part. So if they wanted to open a quarry, would this bar them from doing it?
Yes. It would, for, for a period of one year.
No, well, I mean, not, no, beyond that, I mean, if, if you, if you actually pass zoning against uh against quarries. How would you, why wouldn't it prohibit one that, maybe, maybe they would want it out there?
I, I'm sorry to interrupt, um you, you make it, you make an excellent point. What would be allowed or prohibited uses of land? Under zoning would be dependent upon the study that's done by your planning commission and their recommendations that they make. I don't envision that there would be a blanket system that said that you could not possibly operate a quarry in Atchison County. Uh most of the time, that's done through a permitting process. And so a, an owner or user of land would have to apply for permit. And then the, the project itself would be uh looked at on the merits. And that would be the case with pick a new company coming in to establish a quarry or even with betis, if they're playing, if they're wanting to open a quarry, they would still have to go through that process. But again, it would be available to them in a year. Or whenever you got.
So who's doing the work of then? Do you have a planning commission or they gonna be the ones that are actually uh reviewing those uh applications for a new quarry somewhere else or anywhere in it? So what, do, doesn't that then it keep expanding the scope of what the planning commission does? And then at what point does it become big enough that you're gonna have to have staff? And?
They're, they're almost certainly will have to be at least one person on staff. Whether it could be somebody that already had, that's already on staff as an additional duty or not, I, I don't know, but, and a lot of that would depend on what the what the recommendations or, or what's adopted eventually. But it tho- those permits are initially going to go to a zoning administrator, who is typically a person on staff. And then uh a- and then those are typically also reviewed by the, the planning commission. I, I don't envision that we're going to be overrun with so many of those that we need to have five full-time.
Well, it, it, not, it wouldn't be just with the quarries, but I anticipate that there's gonna be a, an expansion.
Well, let me so this is very specific. You, you made it so that it addresses quarries. Okay, now granted, from, if, once the planning mission is formed and you, you initiate the zoning, then yes, you could add, I assume you could add other things to this, other than just.
Well, they're gonna be found out, they're gonna be fished for in the planning commission. But, by having a planning commission, it, it's, it's not gonna be that somebody out of the blue, they're gonna read what the recommendations are, and then if you don't pass it, they're gonna be saying, well, look, it's been identified, so I expect there would be an expansion of the uh zoning process or the, the categories of which it would entail, that's the reason when I said uh staff, it would be in partially in anticipation of other things on the quarries. So I'm sorry, I never.
Well, no, I, I think the road you're going down is that this is gonna expand into this foster. And I think the way this is written you can address quarries coming in. Or, you know, another entity that wants to come in that's not popular, you know, in the county, and then you address that. But like, like Pat's saying, you're not gonna get you know, inundated all of a sudden with requests from quarries, um that's just not, that's just not gonna happen. And then this allows you the ability to look at each one individually. Maybe the one out west that you're talking about, maybe the neighbors welcome it, maybe they love it. And it's not even an issue. You know, this one is an issue. And it'll, this allows us, gives us the tools to look at it. And you've drawn in potentially seven uh different county members, township members to go over and discuss it. People that have differing opinions. You bring them all together and they make a decision based on the information that they have and sentiment out in the community, but without it we got nothing, you, you got no control, very little control at all, nothing. You, you these folks that wanna come in, they make deals with the landowner despite what the neighbors say, and they, and it happens, so.
I'm reading this over, I mean, I feel like we're limiting ourself, you know? Sure, the quarry's a problem right now, but, you know, let's say next year, five years from now, you know, we have turbine, wind turbines coming in. I love the idea of the commit, uh setting up a group of citizens from the townships, you know? But can it be set up, you know, we recommend, you know, we meet, recommend and make and you guys have the final decision on, you know, not the commission, the planning commission has the final decision. You know, we could present what we have to you guys, and we could recommend what we should do, and you guys would say let's go with that or not, you know?
And that's how it would work, it's more important. The Board of County Commissioners would always have the final say, the planning commission makes recommendations.
They, they just recommend to you guys, yes. Yeah, but I feel like, you know, and this is good, don't get me wrong, but I think we're limiting ourself here. You know, let's say we have a different problem next year, you know, a different corporation coming in.
Yeah. Yeah. You, you, you say corporation, that's not the concern, I think the concern would be. You, you say corporation, that's not the concern. I think the concern would be with, it's with the land use.
Right.
And, and yes, this is extremely specific because that was the direction that was given to me. And so I've tried to do what was asked.
Yeah, I, my, my thought all along was that it's got to be specific targeted, but it's gotta say, you know, health, well-being and such and such, you know? In that way, it's more than just one specific, you know, incident and one specific thing. Uh, but I just feel like if you've got a, you know, if you've got a group from all over the county and we search and search for the right folks, the ones that are, you know, objective. I think you can come up with a the committee that's gonna work, a planning committee that's gonna work, but. My question, I think, I think the question, I got my answer to my question. Now, there's no way even, let's say we proceed with what we're talking about, you know? There's no way to step, to stop really what's gonna happen with a quarry right now. That's gonna come in less than a month. Uh, that's all.
Not with that.
This, even with this.
No, this, this, there's a moratorium built in.
Oh, is there more? Okay.
There's a 12-month moratorium built in.
Okay, so that would possibly at least slow things down for them, wouldn't it?
It definitely could. And it would also, if we set out on this, this path. Perhaps change the way that they might operate.
Thank you for coming back.
Yeah, I guess I wanna make one final comment here, you know? I think the public should be made aware of what, you know, because, you know, anytime people hear zoning, it's a very bad word, right Eric? And uh, I think you commissioners should explain it to the public what you're thinking about doing, maybe, you know? Make people more aware.
I've done that and no one's in favor of zoning that I've spoke to.
But, but we're not.
That it affects, that it affects. I mean, my constituents inside the city might be because it doesn't affect them, right? They're already have ordinances and, and rules to follow, but.
But, you know, this.
Well, a whole lot of that.
It's the truth, like.
No, it's not the truth. Because when you start talking about some of these other issues that he's talking about, that does affect everybody in the county. It affects everybody. So, so some of the things may be very specific to parts of the county. But some of these bigger issues that he's bringing up may very well affect everybody, even district one. So I, I don't agree with that. I don't, I don't buy that.
Well, that's a perception, perspective. And I think anyone in touch with the rural folks of Atchison County, that is the perspective. So much that, uh, this, the gentleman that owns the land that's trying to stop the quarry doesn't wanna be the reason that zoning comes to Atchison County, like specifically.
I wouldn't want to be.
I mean, I promise you, those are the words, like, I don't wanna be the reason of this, like, yes, they, everybody wants to stop this, but in education, it, this is too quick, like, this is.
Well, that's why I think people need to, I mean, they're gonna hear zoning, the county's talking about, the county commissioner talking about possibly zoning. And they're not gonna understand the full picture, you know? You know, we're not putting laws against the residents, you know, you know, there's zoning that can do that, you know, that
No, I.
Limit the use of our property, you know, we gotta get permits to do everything. And that's what people don't like. And this isn't gonna do that.
But that's the first step to doing that.
Right, right.
It opens the door.
Yes. It opens the box.
But I think you have to have, in order to have what you guys are talking about, you'd have to have the majority of township, potentially township committee members go against everything they've been saying for, for years about what they don't want in zoning. So the very folks that we're gonna bring in here, hopefully to, to be part of this planning commission would have to.
Which would be wonderful. Like, that would be wonderful.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I don't know how it could go.
Actually, all you would need is two commissioners that would be positive because they can go against what the planning committee even says.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think you're gonna, I think you're gonna.
Well, that's, if you don't have to adhere to what the planning commission and they come up and you know, they, they, they could go on their own and two, two against one and pass whatever zoning.
Right, and you can go down this road.
That's the real fear.
So much hypothetical that you could throw in this, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I appreciate because you're in the county. And so I appreciate your perspective. I, I think it can be done in a way that's not, that doesn't invade on people's personal property. I, I think there's a way to do it, but but there has to be trust. I get that. There has to be an amount of trust from the the folks out, out in the county, so. But this is how it gets started. This is how the discussion started. You know, folks like yourself, property owners start to trust that commissioners are gonna actually do.
Right. It, it's not an easy decision. I'm not, I'm not trying to be flippant or anything here because this is something that, I mean, I.
And honestly, I think it would be worth having an evening meeting with this as a topic and bring them in here and talk about it because there are strong feelings, I promise you.
Yeah, I agree. I think an evening meeting would be great. Let the county aware of what being proposed here.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, for.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This looks good, Pat, I think.
So are we people in this thing? No action? Or did you want me to call for a vote? I've, I can call for a vote. You tell me.
Yeah.
Call for a vote? Okay. What's the resolution number, Pat?
Hold on, the, the resolution that adopts or the the, at, at points or establishes a planning commission is not yet because we have to have the people selected for it and we have to know how many people are going to be on it. So I think that either way requires more discussion about whether.
Well, but even, even just considering it further though, is all, I think is all you're talking about.
Yeah.
Do we have to, is that what?
You're, even if all three of you were saying, I'm gung ho and I wanna do this, it's not ready to be adopted today because we need to identify the people who serve on there and we need to have. I mean, I, I'm hearing that nine members and it is the suggestion and we want to try to include someone from each township in.
Well, and then I, and identifying them, you would probably do like we do with all of our other committees. Publish in the paper, give letters of interest, tell me why, like, all the things. But I guess to his point, like, why go through all those? Why go through that process if we're not gonna go through the process, I guess? Is what I, that's why I was asking if we should.
Yeah, and then the, the other minor point is we, we usually don't assign a resolution number until something's passed because we've had several that we assign one and then it wasn't passed and then we, we, we had a mistake. We ended up reusing a resolution number. We haven't had that happen in several years because we, we, we don't assign the numbers until they're uh, until they're adopted. Although the next number is fifteen fifty-one. I don't.
Okay.
I don't know what the answer is. I, I liked your idea of just tailing the discussion if that's what.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanna understand next steps because to me it would be having an evening meeting and having the discussion with the county, like.
Moving forward.
Yeah. Before you would even talk about this. And then from that meeting, if the consensus is to move forward, everybody in that room knows that they could serve on the committee to put their name in, like, it's kind of like. So do we want to look at our calendars and set an evening meeting? Um, preferably in June. You guys, what's your schedule on June 12?
Mine's open.
Yeah, I'm good.
You wanna do then? Okay, and? Yeah, sorry.
I may not be available through 12. I don't know that I need to be.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Oh, yeah. The sun is moving that day and I.
About the next week, 19th.
You guys are off the 19th.
Oh, well, we're also, you know, the further out, if for some reason we would have a change of heart and we would want to adopt this, they would probably already be on premises onsite with the quarry.
If that's the case, you have to do it like.
Well, that's next week, next Saturday. I mean.
You have to do it.
Yeah. So, I mean. They may not get there soon as they thought.
Okay, so do we wanna do it sooner than that then? Or you're saying?
Well. If, if they were onsite doing work, does a moratorium take effect?
It would not apply to them. So if you were, were wanting to adopt a moratorium, I could change the resolution and I, the draft resolution, I'd have prepared to take out the statement about you having started the other process. Uh, but, but otherwise, if you, if you don't adopt it, something today or maybe next week, you likely wouldn't have the intended effect of delaying this quarry.
What should I, that you plan to start with then?
Well, that part doesn't really need to be in the, the resolution. It just, you, you do have to have the, the concept and the commitment to the concept of beginning uh, the work of land use regulation.
What about May 28th? It's a Wednesday.
Mine's open.
Are you open then, Pat?
Yes.
Seven PM like we did County Lake?
Sure. Here.
Yeah. Can you create a post, a public notice for that?
Sure.
And then, okay, so we should.
Should this be?
Break them down.
I mean, how are we going to put this? Is this zoning, is everything on the board? We talking wind power? We talking solar? We talking quarries? Or are we limiting or the scope of our meeting for just a quarry? Cause I think if we say zoning, I.
Think it has to be everything.
It has to be. Okay.
We, you know, not, not everything. That's, no. You, you won't get anybody there. That's the case. What I'm, it's like I was saying before, it, it. We, we, it's gotta be limited. I mean, I won't even agree to it unless it's targeted, limited, but you can't put quarry period.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, like.
It's gotta be.
Quarries, wind power, solar power, our nuisance, everything that it's gonna encompass.
Uh, yeah, there's probably a, a, the way to term it, that, that, you know, terminology to use that would and let me, let me think about it. But I mean, yes, it's, it's not gonna be.
Just quarry.
It's not gonna be everything. Or just quarries. It can be somewhere in the middle. We could, we could, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's not gonna be just quarries. It can't be.
Well, yeah, it's understanding the process.
I mean, how, I'm just looking for a way that we build this meeting that is truthful. Or is it for the scope of just for now, we're discussing limited targeted zone?
But, that's it. Well, that's it for now, but what they need to understand is the next people sitting in the seat could crank it up and, I mean, you have to understand from beginning to end what it could be, right? And like, then figure out where these three people want to put it, if that's agreed upon, but you gotta be mindful of what could be because I don't wanna be up here saying, well, this is what it will be. And then in four years, somebody sits in my seat and cranks it up. And then people are like, well, you implemented this, like, I'm, I'm just saying, like, it's not. It has to be very.
Yeah, no.
It's, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that? So May 28th, 7:00 PM, Commissioner Room. Are you calling it planning and zoning public decision?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, photos of the County Lake.
Drew is, was wanting to, uh, get out there and get some pictures taken. He expressed that um, before the leaves are too robust on the trees, that they look like a good time to do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I don't, I don't know what, um. I don't know. Um. He said that he knows that we're having a public meeting on the 15th and that you guys are gonna discuss it on the 20th. Um, and he's just kind of in limbo waiting. Waiting. He just doesn't wanna let you guys down if there's something that you want him to be doing or anything like that, so. Are you okay with him doing the pictures and the fishing of it?
I think regardless of the outcome, the prime week with photos and videos, whether it's we sell it, which we need them, or we keep it and we wanna market it like it's a win.
Right.
Yep.
Well, but what if we?
Cost to.
Is there expectation of telling him to move forward and then we decide, well, we're not gonna sell?
No, it's, he doing, he's doing his job.
Yeah.
Knowing what could be.
If, if it's sold, his, whatever is part of the, the, the fee that he's, would get out of the sale. Um, if it's not sold and he's still done all this work, there could be a bill that we receive. We may not, but he could still bill us for.
Well, that's what I was wondering. And I would think that, you know, we got two days before our meeting. Why would I go out there and take pictures the day before?
And he was wanting to do it Friday morning, so.
I mean, he's a professional. He's saying that's the prime time. The, the snapshots he's already sent us are pretty awesome.
I mean.
So you're saying he wants for the 16th?
Yes.
Once, it's after meeting, that. Hopefully send a signal to, you know, cause it's, it's not intended, but.
Yeah. We can just tell them at the meeting, like, the photographer's gonna be taking pictures tomorrow because we needed to be on top of things. It's the truth. I mean, yeah, take the photos. Do we need a vote on that?
He's already planning to do it at any rate.
He would, but I don't think so.
All right. Um, then we have the, um, CIC Tax Administration Solution On-Site Training for the Clerk's Office, um, staff for both June and November. Um, so I would look for a motion to approve uh, the annual people wear agreement between Computer Information Concepts Incorporated and Atchison County in the amount of $11,200. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pass is three to zero. This will come out of our reserve bunch.
So with that, you'll have additional invoices that come later. Um, hotel charges, meal charges, any other expenses that incur. So we can, you'll get a separate invoice for those that you'll have to revoke to or pay them out of your budget if it's under.
Okay.
Which you should get an invoice for those people to pay off those.
I mean, I mean, it's a customer. I just. Will they make their own regulations? Next.
It's $70,000 you take up those houses.
All right, next we have an executive session, uh, non-elected.
I'm going to the Board of County Commissioners, reassessing the executive session at two fifty. P M to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes. Uh, in the commission room, the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Three county commissioners, finance director. Uh, county counselor and Roden Bridge superintendent.
Oh, wages. I'll second. It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. All right, we are back in open session and have the need for. One more executive session.
I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, the next executives.
Okay, I'll move the Board of County Commissioners, reassessing the executive session at. Three oh six P M to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session. In thirty minutes. In the commission room in the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, H R, finance.
I'll second. It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
What's that?
Uh, whatever's on the agenda, wages and responsibilities. Okay, we are back in open session. Um, no, okay, notices and communications. We will reiterate that this Thursday, May fifteenth, seven P M, Atchison County Lake Discussion will be held here in the commission room. And also May twenty eighth at seven P M here in the commission room for a zoning and planning meeting. Um, other than that, no resolutions. I would look for a motion to adjourn into workshop.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.